Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Ilaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the February 17th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Madam Clerk?
At 10:15, there will be an appointment from Marilyn Fettlecheck Harley at Lorraine County Preservation Network, and Sarah Hobbs from Cleveland Restoration Society Heritage Home Loan Program. Under Resolution Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
No investments, appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second.
Was there any? Two, okay. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
None of the Commissioners authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners?
Commissioners, at the end of our regularly scheduled meeting, I'd like to have an executive session to specifically talk about new hires and also a matter pending litigation. Both issues are by wish, are allowed under the Sunshine Law. Thank you.
Number 10, established charges for record storage, microfilming, and/or scanning by Lorraine County Records Center for 2005 for the agencies and departments outside the general fund, and public records requests for copies from microfilm or scanned image in accordance with ORC 143.43.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion.
You have comments, Mr. Cordez?
Just a brief one, Commissioners. We've been working on this for about a year, trying to establish some cause. We had inquiries sometime back from one or two of our peers in the townships to be able to use the Record Center as a more of a universal center for the entire county, rather than just for county archives and county records. This is a step in that direction. I anticipate that we will be able to provide services to some of the smaller jurisdictions with microfilming, digital imagery, and record storage and maintenance and retrieval along some of the lines that we've talked about at the Community Alliance and other venues to have globalized services, so that we have one center that's serving not just county, but the political jurisdictions within Lorraine County. And this is a step in that direction. I'm very pleased that we're turning that corner, plus another issue you'll be dealing with soon as an architect, to expand the center, and that we have more room there with people moving out, going to the Justice Center. We're growing in leaps and bounds, and I'm very excited about being able to grow this center for the entire county, and I appreciate the Commissioners' support on that, and the good work by Lynn Wallace and her staff down at the Record Center. Thank you.
And we're happy to have it.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Authorized release of retainage of carol glass, carol glass and maintenance, Uklod Ohio, in an amount of $66,888, plus interest. As final payment for work performed on Lorraine County Justice Center project, unnecessary paperwork has been completed.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Established notice rules for meetings of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners?
Jerry, you just want to briefly tell us what this is about.
Under the Sunshine Law, the law establishes minimum notice requirements that any public body are supposed to give, letting persons know when their meetings are going to be. There's a little phrase in that law that says that each body should actually adopt a rule, so what I'm recommending to all my public bodies is they go ahead and adopt a rule incorporating all the Sunshine Law requirements, just to make sure we're not missing some little technical glitch there. So all this is doing is adopting as our rules what's already in the Sunshine.
And then we should do that annually at our organizational meeting?
I'm recommending that. That way, when somebody comes along and wants to know what the rules are, you can find them real quick.
So you'll make a note of that for next year, Trace. Also moved. Thank you, Jerry.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
I approve an entry into agreement with Collins, Gore, and Boswick Architects, Cleveland, Ohio, to perform architectural services for the renovations and alterations to Lorraine County Record Center.
Well, you just talked about that. You want to say anything more?
Not too much more, Commissioners. I'm not sure how many people are aware that we moved a lot of people out of the Gates Building into the Justice Center that were occupying the front of the Gates Building. And that's that large building, for those who don't notice that large building with 911 EMAR in the back, and we have the seniors up on the second floor. We're now occupying most of the third floor, the entire front section of the first floor. The building has never been properly renovated since we took it over after Job and Family Services left. We just kind of moved in and did minor renovations in-house, so we really need to turn the corner and get our Record Center where we're doing a renovation that's going to last us 15 or 20 years, and put the center together. And I would encourage the two Commissioners, well, all three, but the two that are on the Community Alliance, to have the Record Center folks come out in a couple of weeks and then go over these fees and schedules and all the services we can provide to the county, along with our continued effort to have that intergovernmental cooperation and sharing of services. Thank you.
Questions, Commissioners?
No.
Also moved.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
An expedited Type 1 annexation petition for 10.74 acres from Pittsfield Township to the City of Oberlin, Ohio, Agent James N. Taylor.
Mr. Ennis?
Madam Chair, may I ask this be held for, to the end of the agenda? There's a concern that the engineer brought up, and I'd like to talk with the agent for the petitioners and get that worked out. Perhaps while you're in executive session on the personnel matters, we can discuss that and then come back and move on.
Okay. Fine. Madam Clerk?
Under the engineer, instruct the clerk to publish a consulting services public announcement to contract for services for various county engineer projects. Engineering firms interested in being considered for a contract to provide the required services should reply with a statement of qualifications no later than 2:00 p.m. on March 29. Statements received after the deadline will not be considered, as required by ORC 153.65 through 71. Responding firms will be evaluated and ranked in order for their qualifications. Following this evaluation, the engineer's office will enter into contract negotiations with the most highly qualified firm. Notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram on February 25th, in connection with the winding and resurfacing and adding four-foot paid burms for Colley Road, County Road 59, and also Island Road, County Road 58.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise for the 2005 chip and seal program. Estimated cost is $334,581, to be paid 100% from MVGT funds account 220011102450301, engineering contracts. This notice will be published in the morning journal on February 22nd and March 1st, and bids to be opened at 2:00 p.m. on March 8th in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for the Marnes Run Ditch Improvement Project, Ilaria Township. Mandatory pre-bid meeting will be held at Lorraine Soil and Water Conservation Office at 2:00 p.m. on March 4th. Notice will be in the Chronicle Telegram on February 21st and 28th, and bids will be accepted until 2:00 p.m. on March 15th in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Under the sheriff, authorize Lorraine County on behalf of the sheriff to enter into airmark operating agreement for food service Lorraine County Correctional Facility. This contract is for three years, containing two one-year options to renew. The price per meal fluctuates based upon the established sliding scale of meals served.
Mr. Cordez, did you have comments?
None on this, Commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Drzostowski, Captain Drzostowski is here. Do you have any comment on the renewal of this agreement? Sorry, Drz.
The only comment I have is just basically, we reviewed several different options, and we're very satisfied with Airmark. They give us the best service, and we feel the best price, so that's why we decided to renew the contract with them and continue it for a possible five years.
Thank you.
How much is a price per meal?
Yeah, it fluctuates based on the population. It could go from 99 cents a meal, depending if the population's high, all the way to sometimes $1.05 if the population's way down. So depending on the average daily balance of the people we have in there, that's how it fluctuates.
Okay. Thank you.
Also moved. Madam Clerk?
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, county administrator?
Just for an update to the board, I will be out of town tomorrow and over the weekend. Normally, what I do since, this is the first time I've been out since the new board's been assembled, I normally will designate one of our senior directors to take care of my immediate needs from my office, and I think it's Mr. Twining's turn, so he'll have the helm, and I'm sure he'll chart a steady course, and I'll be in touch with the office by phone, and I use my laptop and do the internet, so we'll be available, but Mr. Twining will be taking care of the immediate needs. I normally don't announce that I send you an email, but since it's the first time, I just wanted to let the board know.
Thank you.
Good luck, Ron.
We can have fun tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's it, Jim?
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Commissioners, I might just mention, I don't know if you recall from the last Township Association, there's this brouhaha about Senate Bill 18, and that's talking about the township zoning, the general welfare language. It's been going back and forth, and currently, nobody's quite sure what the version that is now, that has been passed, what it says. And just for your information, the Township Association, the State Township Association is asking the governor to veto that. If you're attending the association meeting tonight, that's probably going to be brought up. I don't know if the Commissioners are interested in considering taking some kind of stand on that or not, but I just want to give you that for some thought. That's likely to be an issue brought up tonight, or by people contacting you in the near future.
Do you have a recommendation for us?
Well, at this point, it is so confusing, I don't think it's a good law. I would like to see it vetoed.
I know that at the last association meeting, Richard Williams had called me prior to it, and I had talked around Twining Community Development. He sent some information over, and then you had conversation, and apparently, it is confusing. No one seems to have-
Well, I mean, I don't think it's as bad as some people portray it, but the problem is it is so confusing now that I don't think anybody understands what it says, and even if it's not as bad as it seems to be, it's going to be so, it's just going to cause such confusion over what the status of the law is for that reason alone. I think it just ought to be not take effect.
Should the board send a letter?
Well, I guess I'm asking the board considering to send a letter to the governor, asking him to veto it.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Is that it, Jerry?
Commissioners' report?
Commissioner Kikowski?
No report, thank you.
Nope.
I have no report this morning.
I have a clerk's report, just to remind you that investment advisory will meet Tuesday, February 22nd at 10:15 here, and then also, I need a motion in a second to receive and journalize an annexation petition for 226.13 acres from Carlisle Township to the City of Ilaria, James N. Taylor is the agent.
And what does this do, if we receive and journalize it?
It just goes on the books that we did receive and journalize.
And then it starts-
Since that is a public hearing, yes.
Of the timeframe running?
Correct.
You moving?
Move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Board correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone who wishes to address the board? David, are you the official Oberlin representative and spokesperson this morning?
Actually, I have the official representative is remaining seated at the moment. Thank you, Commissioners. Five very short things regarding public records and Sunshine and all. First, thank you for the newly downloadable, easily searchable copy of the agenda that's on the Commissioners' website. All that, I mean, it's been there, people can see it, but now they can easily download it, they can keep it, and they can word search it more easily than they ever could. Thank you for that. Second, thank you for Lynn Wallace and the Record Center. That really is better than it used to be, and keeps getting better still. It's still a little hard to find the agenda on the website, but I'm sure one of these days, that'll all be really easy, too. It's easy with clicks, it's hard to bookmark it, but we'll straighten that someday. Also, just a reminder that the board correspondence is on that agenda and is really interesting for people who miss the waiving of the reading all the time, but that's a very informative thing as well. And the last is about the rules of meetings, which I'm going to be interested in and looking at. And the one thing before even seeing them that I at least want to mention is that the Sunshine Law and notice rules are different for general, for regular meetings and special meetings. And there are some organizations, public organizations, that don't establish a regular meeting, so they're always having special meetings, and they only provide the notice that's required for special meetings, which is a whole lot less. I hope to the extent the Commissioners are involved in establishing the framework and the atmosphere for public notice and things like that, that you will encourage all of the boards and commissions and public entities under your jurisdiction to establish a regular meeting, so that at least those regular meetings do get publicized the other way. On a special meeting, you only have to let the newspapers know and put a notice on your own bulletin board. That's very hard for people who don't want to buy all those bulletin boards to know about. So I hope that the regular meeting notices are very clear, but I hope that to the extent it's possible, you go beyond what the Sunshine Law requires in encouraging agencies to minimize the number of special meetings they call, and to make their public notice more like regular meetings whenever possible. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the board? Mark McConnell?
Yes, Mark McConnell, Pittsfield Township. I was, Issue 14, which was the annexation. Obviously, the township has an agreement with the city, which we're not allowed to oppose the annexation, but we do have several questions, and I don't know whether this is just something that Jerry and the agent and I can, we can discuss while you guys are in exact, or is something that you would want me to put on the floor at this time?
Why don't we do that when we break, and then if there's still an issue?
See if your questions can be answered in that discussion. If not, then we'll hear them at that time.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? I see we have Bill Byrd here from the Lorraine County Historical Society, I have Dennis Lamont from Lakeshore Railway, and to your right there, from the Lorraine Historical Society, to what do we owe the honor of this visit?
Well, I'm here with the-
Oh, you're with, okay.
Right.
And Dennis?
We're here with Bill.
Okay. All right. Well, I thought maybe you were here for another reason, so welcome. Okay. No one else wants to speak to us this morning? I move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Thank you. The Commissioners will reconvene. We have a 10:15 appointment. We're a little tardy for it, with Marilyn Fettlecheck Harley from the Lorraine County Preservation Network, and Sarah Hobbs with the Cleveland Restoration Society. It's detailing heritage, the Heritage Home Loan Program. Welcome, Marilyn, and I see you brought a lot of supporters with you, and including our treasured Dan Tillerick who's here, and as you know, Dan's not a strong supporter of this, and I told Dan that this was his penance for Lent, and he came anyway. Thank you, Dan.
Wow, I hadn't realized how much authority you're in here.
No, it's all goodwill.
You still don't like me, meet me on Friday. I know that. It's not a complete dissensation, is what you do.
Yeah. I'm going to turn it over to Bill Byrd to do the introductions, but I just want to say that I'm delighted to be here. I've met with both Commissioner Kelo and Kikowski during the election to talk about the program, and it's just really nice to see you here. Commissioner Blair, it's just always a delight to be in front of you, so thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
And I'll be back.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Bill Byrd. I'm Executive Director of Lorraine County Historical Society. Just knocked something off the dais, but I'm very pleased to be able to bring our team here to talk about this program today. Before I even get into that, I just want to say briefly, but very importantly, there's been financial support from the County Board of Commissioners for the Historical Society, and we have chosen to use some of that money specifically to sponsor the formation of the Lorraine County Preservation Network. Marilyn is the coordinator of that, and we've been underway for three years now. We've made an impact in various parts of the county, and the program that you're going to hear about today is just one piece of what the network has been working on, but it's an extremely important piece. And again, we're very pleased that we have the network here in the county, and we're very pleased that you've chosen to support us in that way. We have worked hand in hand with Cleveland Restoration Society because they have developed this program in Cuyahoga County. They are experts in it. Their success rate has been phenomenal, and so we have chosen to team up Marilyn and Sarah Hobbs to make presentations, like you've already heard individually in many cases, and it's been a very good relationship. We will continue to work hand in hand with them as this goes forward, whenever we're able to establish the program. The Lorraine County Network intends to continue to be involved with Cleveland Restoration Society all the way through, and we're very excited about the potential that this program brings for revitalizing neighborhoods and for creating enthusiastic pride among homeowners in various neighborhoods. Having said that, I will tell you very quickly who our team is. Kathleen Crowther is the Executive Director of the Cleveland Restoration Society, and a subgroup of that organization is the Preservation Resource Center of Northeastern Ohio, which therefore includes Lorraine County, which is a contiguous county, and Sarah Hobbs is the Director of that Resource Center. And then our own coordinator, who works for the Lorraine County Preservation Network under the leadership of the County Historical Society, is Marilyn Fettlecheck Harley. So I'm going to turn this over to them, and we thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Well, it's, we're very excited to have this opportunity to speak to the Commission. Thank you very much for dedicating time for this. And we also would like to thank the Lorraine County Historical Society and the Preservation Network. It's been a wonderful partnership, working with the network and having that sort of cross-fertilization between Cleveland and Cuyahoga County and Lorraine County. We have been interacting in the county really for several years now, and it's a great time for us to work together at this point, really in history, where our region is struggling and where we need to collaborate and have a regional view of how we succeed in what is, as we all know, a global economy. And so it's in that spirit that we have developed partnerships with Lorraine County Historical Society and the network, and it's just great to have Marilyn Fettlecheck on this project because Marilyn used to work for the National Trust for Historic Preservation. I don't know if that's very well-known, but she has come to us with a great background. I'd like to leave at least one major message today, and that is historic preservation is no longer an elitist activity. Historic preservation is a core economic development strategy in modern city planning, and we're going to show you some slides that substantiate that. If this thing works, after it dropped on the ground. Okay, well, Sarah, would you mind helping out here? Thanks. Okay. Today, we're going to share the model of our linked deposit loan programs. We actually have two big programs, one with the City of Cleveland, one with the county. Our organization is a classic nonprofit preservation organization, started in the '70s when urban renewal sort of hit American cities and, you know, the grassroots rose up against it. We were formed at that time. We have progressed over the years, really by trying to align historic preservation goals with mainstream community activities, substantiating that my initial comment about historic preservation no longer being an elitist activity of sort of museum-making out of architecturally significant buildings. We're structured as a classic nonprofit organization with a governing board of trustees, community advisors, and we're fortunate that we have a significant staff that is, has, works extremely hard and is very well-versed and technically proficient on historic preservation strategies. And it was in 1999, with the support of the Nord Family Foundation and others, that we initiated the Preservation Resource Center of Northeastern Ohio, so that we could enlarge the umbrella, so to speak, of communities that we interact with to support and promote historic preservation activities. So when I say we have been interacting in Lorraine County for a few, a number of years, it has been largely since 1999, when we launched the program. And one of the most wonderful things that has happened here is the formation of the Lorraine County Preservation Network, and Marilyn's going to say a couple of words about that.
Changing heads again. I just want to make sure everybody's familiar with the network here. It is, as Bill said, it is I am the staff person for the network. It is supported by the county commissioners and by the Lorraine County Historical Society, and it's just been an excellent partnership, and it has really grown out of some funding provided by the Commissioners. This is a list of the organizations that officially identify themselves as participants. The network is not a corporate body. We are just simply a mutual support network that exists to share skill-building and mutual assistance. The, there's many other organizations besides these listed here that show up to our meetings and participate, but these were the groups that wanted to come on board, and we have people here today from some of these organizations. We have Carol Ganzel and Jane Blodgett from the Oberlin Historic Preservation Commission. We have, from Black River, we have Al Doan, and then we have John Bender, who's an individual supporter, and we're delighted to have him today. And we're delighted to have him today. And am I forgetting anybody out there? And David Ashenhurst is also comes. And are you Tony Hill?
Yes.
Oh, we have Tony Hill here. I knew we'd meet for the first time this morning. He's from the South Elyria Neighborhood Development Corporation. So we've really got a group of people here that are working to bring this about. And this is just the mission statement of the network. And the basic point of it is that we are trying to effectively influence public and private parties to recognize that historic resources are an important part of Lorraine County's future. So that's, that's what our mission statement says. And as for the Heritage Home Program, the network had its first meeting in October of 2001. And at that time, they identified the Heritage Home Loan Program as a significant number-one goal. And we put the date of January 1st, '03 for when we wanted it, but we're willing to be flexible. We're really do grateful for being here. And I'd just like to, the closing for the network's comments, to say that the network is more than happy to assist the county commissioners on any project they're involved on that entails an historic building. If you're going to be involved in a building that's more than 50 years of old, let us know. We'd be delighted to come and help you and talk to you about it. So with that, I will turn it back to the program experts.
Our first foray into homeowner assistance was in 1993 when we worked with the National Trust for Historic Preservation, received one of their inner-city venture fund awards to start our neighborhood historic preservation program that is still operated in CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Eligible Awards of the City of Cleveland. These are the low, moderate-income wards of the city that are bladed per HUD standards. And through developing the program, continuous improvement, a hard-working staff, partnerships with CDC's collaborations, you know, the whole business model for success. We have gotten this program to the point that it is, it is probably the largest historic preservation housing program anywhere in the country. We have produced an astounding number of projects. And it's through this combination of technical assistance that is given directly to the homeowner and the incentivized loan product that is achieved through a linked deposit that are the key variables for success in the program. And the projects really sell themselves. I'm just going to show you a couple of projects in the City of Cleveland. And these are in some of the most challenging areas of Cleveland where we have all the problems of aging housing stock, depressed real estate values, abandonment, boarding, all of those problems. But we have been able to get on the ground, work directly with homeowners who are committed to their homes or who own their homes because they were passed down to them. And they needed that extra bit of assistance to make their house usable for contemporary living needs and beautiful to boot. We have high architectural standards that do not necessarily entail extra money. It is a misnomer to think that historic preservation is more expensive. One cannot make that statement. We regularly bring projects in below budget compared to standard renovation costs that do wholesale window replacement and aluminum siding. Couple charts only, but this is to show you that a preservation program, a housing preservation program using a historic preservation theme can be a high-volume program. Just showing you the stats for the last four years. We have worked with 156 property owners, giving them free technical assistance. We signed 41 new loans. We completed construction on 23 projects. And then we still have, under our management, our technical team manages 52 construction projects. So, you know, this is Cuyahoga County. We have different populations, you know, different numbers here. But this is to prove that it is a high-volume program. It's very popular. So when we began working with the county in 2001, we were able to launch from a period of, a platform rather, of significant experience. And we started this Heritage Home Loan Program that has absolutely taken off. It is now larger than the program we have in the CDBG Eligible Awards of the City. We're working with 14 partner cities in Cuyahoga County. It's a fantastic way to help people in the older houses, stay in those houses, improve those houses, increase property values so that the county can stabilize its tax receipts moving into the future. Now with that, I'm going to turn this program over to Sarah Hobbs, who started with us when she came to our organization managing this program. And she is an expert on this and a rising star. Sarah Hobbs.
Thank you, Kathleen. Basically, the Heritage Home Loan Program boils down to a couple of important concepts. This program has proven, I think, a lot of things in Cuyahoga County. We initially started this program with three pilot cities in order to test this program out and see how it worked there. It was so successful in those three pilot cities that we immediately launched and continued to add more and more cities as we went. Some of the important things about this program that I think makes it different from others in the past, one being the county's role in this program is mainly to help provide a subsidized interest rate for the homeowner. The county's money is not the one that is actually being lent out to the homeowners. The beauty of this program is that the bank assumes the financial risk. And the bank really assumes the role as the lender, not only lending their own money, but also qualifying the applicants so that they use tried-and-true lending criteria to establish these loans. We, again, expanded into those 14 participating cities that currently participate today very rapidly, basically because of these ingredients. And we've seen real success with it. You may all be familiar with another home loan program that was established through Cuyahoga County called the HELP Program. That was initially established earlier on, I believe, in 1998. There's a little bit of a difference between the two programs. The HELP Program was established originally and it's a much larger volume program. They do, I think at this point, they've done about $63 million worth of loans in Cuyahoga County. Big difference there is that they have a five-year term. They use multiple banks, multiple lending partners. The property value is capped at $250,000. And really, the cities themselves are responsible for administering and monitoring this program. Cuyahoga County Program with the HELP Program saw a lot of success. Again, $63 million loan to this point. But the county treasurer recognized there that with this loan program, there were a few glitches. One of them being with the five-year term, homeowners were borrowing a much smaller amount of money. So with the Heritage Program, when he designed that program, extended the term. He also was seeing a real request for programs that could meet everybody's needs instead of possibly just the smaller-valued houses in terms of $250,000 and lower. He saw a request from people around the county really asking for assistance for them as well. Middle-income families have home repairs that they needed to take care of and they didn't really find the pool of programs available to them. One of the things he did was raise the property value. And really, one of the most important features of the program, established a no-income restriction on the eligibility for homeowners, which was key for this program. The interest rate is fixed for this loan program, no matter what. It stays at the same interest rate. Exclusive lender is important role because the lending team at these banks really learned how to work with these programs and get a customized system down so that lending efficiency is very smooth and well-executed. And then, of course, the third nonprofit body administers the program and takes away basically all additional work from those municipalities. So by implementing this program, our municipalities aren't going to be inundated with a lot of extra paperwork and phone calls and a lot of extra administrative work. Heritage Home Program to this date has signed 170 loans and given technical assistance, that free technical assistance, to over 900 property owners in the county. We have and are very proud of a 0% default rate for this loan program, which is really, I think, for a lot of loan programs, an exciting thing to take a look at because, again, the bank is doing the lending here. They're deciding on what the loan criteria is and it's their money that's at risk for the lending. And because of that, we've been able to establish a 0% default rate. And we've loaned about $5.5 million over the course of the period of the program. This chart will give you an idea about how all of the partners link together and how this program really operates and amongst each other. The county government, again, provides that subsidy to the homeowner. So basically, instead of actually lending the county money directly to the homeowner, the bank does the lending, but the county money is what helps provide that low fixed-interest rate. If a homeowner borrows $10,000, the county would then subsidize that $10,000 loan by purchasing a CD for a similar amount. That particular CD, whereas it normally would return, let's say, a 6.5% rate of return, the county instead takes 3% of rate of return. That rate that they're foregoing on their CD gets passed along to the homeowner in the form of that reduced fixed rate. That's basically the very loose description of how it works. The bank, again, qualifies the homeowners. The nonprofit administers the program. The local government helps provide the support to market the program. And then the homeowner, of course, being at the bottom, benefits from the entire package. This is actually how the numbers play out of the general formula that I just described, using actual loan amounts. This would be the finance charge for all of the particular parties involved. The general process for the loan program is really very simple. A homeowner actually goes through the process, much like they're applying for a regular loan at a bank or an equity line. The only addition is, is that they have a little bit of a support system along the way with that nonprofit helping to administer the program. Not only helping to administer the program, provide the homeowner with a little extra support that they might not normally get on a construction project. We have all done construction projects at our home. We know how intimidating sometimes they can be, especially on an older home. You cannot open the Yellow Pages and turn to the section that handles old home repairs, although I certainly wish that was there. So instead, the technical assistance that's delivered by the nonprofit entity can really help provide that extra support in recommending various processes to go through with your construction project, how the project should be done, resources for finding contractors and materials, and really helping provide a little bit of a safety net and actually acting as a guide as that homeowner goes through the process of home repair. Pictures, I think, speak louder than words. And as you'll see here, these are some of the before and after pictures that we've done over the couple of years the program's been up and running. This particular project, I think, really speaks of how a $10,000 loan can make a large splash. And that's, again, due to part of the assistance that we get from the nonprofit, really helping the homeowner identify priorities at the house, which in this case were the roof and the paint that was flaking off the home. Really, we helped her to make the most of her loan amount. This particular project, again, significant before and after. For $18,000, this home got a pretty decent rehab. The homeowners themselves were really excited about the interior of their home because it was mostly original and well-care for. But the exterior with the aluminum siding had really taken its toll over the years. And with the loan amounts, they were able to do a couple of extra things that they didn't anticipate, like, for example, the restoration of that Copper Bay roof that you see on the lower side. When they removed the aluminum siding, they found the outline of where that roof used to exist, but it'd actually been taken off when the aluminum siding was applied. And because they participated in the loan program, were able to save some money here and there, they were able to restore that feature. This particular homeowner addressed the asbestos shingles on the house that were in poor condition and flaking off. And this particular family had a young son and they were worried about the conditions the asbestos were creating. So they did an entire rehab on the exterior, along with building an addition and doing a new kitchen remodel on the home, which I think for us probably remains one of our largest stumbling blocks in the program, is really reinforcing to people that just because this is a historic preservation program, we're not going to make you put back a slate roof after it's been removed or go back to your 1920s kitchen. We don't want that for anybody. We do additions in this program. We do new garages. We do kitchen and bathroom models. We even do things like air conditioning, boiler replacement. We really get to the core operating systems. And what's important about this program and what the goal of the program is, is to keep these houses well-maintained and in good working condition. And if that means, you know, correcting a wet basement in order to keep the future of the house intact, that's exactly what we do. New garages, as I mentioned, all three of these garages are new construction. Here's a property that some of you might know. This is actually in Bay Village, but very close to the border of Lorraine County. It's right on Lake Road. And I think this is a great example of how this program really helps to increase property value, which is one of the main benefits of this particular program, is that homeowners are investing in their homes. And this interest rate helps provide the incentive to do so. This particular homeowner bought this home for just under $300,000 and it's actually on the market today for almost a million because of the rehab that was done on this particular house. They did also an addition off the back and did a complete rehab of the interior and exterior and really improved the property value. City of Cleveland, again, house just kind of needing a little bit of TLC. And they were really able to improve the curbside appeal, which is another aspect of this program. Not every project has to be a huge, significant restoration. In this particular case, the homeowners really just wanted to do a little painting, a little roof repair here and there. And it really just provided the polish and cleanup on this particular property to give it a really nice curbside appeal. Our projects, I think, really range from general maintenance to larger restoration, renovation projects. This gives you an idea about the success that this program has had in our 14 participating communities. Last year alone, we did approximately 235 technical assistance calls while signing 49 loans. So again, even in the third, fourth year of the program, we're still signing 50 loans on a regular annual basis, closing out another 50, which means another 50 projects from years past completed all of their work and completed the investment. And then another 65 under-construction projects meant that those projects were currently doing construction at the time. Benefits to the county. I think Kathleen, if you'd like to go into this particular section, she can certainly outline the benefits that are really incurred by all. I think an important thing to point out on this county level is that the issues that we face with this program are found county-wide, certainly. Some cities have more housing stock that's older than others. But really, every community has older housing stock. And so every county, every community, and every area can really benefit from this type of role. So Kathleen?
Great, Sarah. Yeah, Cuyahoga County is in, loves this program because it is a counter to urban sprawl. We do have an outmigration program. But interestingly, it has helped in those communities that are getting the population. You know, Bay Village, Westlake, those communities also like the program because it helps in the growth management issues, the vulnerability of older and historic properties when, you know, there's that sort of curve of population movement. The county believes that the program is also helping to support its tax receipts. We know that with concrete examples where people have paid up their taxes because they can't go through our program unless our taxes are current. And then also because of the increase in valuations. So the county is, in fact, investing in stabilizing and increasing its property, older property valuations moving into the future. Of course, the homeowner is a great beneficiary of the economic incentive that is, you know, better than even an equity line of credit during the lowest-rate moments we've had over the last couple of years. And the free technical assistance, which is writing up, by the way, full specifications for bid and interacting with contractors to resolve problems and disputes should it, should they arise. And then the local community also benefits because, of course, these are highly visible projects. There's the spillover effect. And it's something that gets communities really excited and creates investor confidence and enthusiasm. The bank actually does make money on this program. We have been told that. The bank has penciled this out. They make some money here. And they get a whole new group of borrowers so they can do sort of a cross-sell there and leverage to the best of their, you know, abilities to make the program even more beneficial to them. So banks are interested in making these loans. And it will help banks that have CRA, Community Reinvestment Act, requirements. So this is our final slide and we would be happy to entertain any questions you may have. We work very closely with the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And they're actually putting us on the road to share this model across the country. And so we've asked them for some assistance. And they said that they would be willing to work with us to try and seed these linked deposit loan programs in our region. So if the county is interested in pursuing this model for home repair, we will do everything we can to bring some National Trust resource. we can to bring some National Trust resources, new monies, to bear here. So that is sort of a fuzzy offer because it is fuzzy right now, but we work closely with them, and they love this, as you can see. This really sells preservation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions?
What is the age of the home? Is that what qualifies for this type of loan?
Fifty years and older is the age cutoff that we use, and then the homeowner has to be willing to go forward with a preservation approach, which is conservation of the original materials. And, you know, we're not academic about that either. There are give and takes, like, you know, reinstalling a slate roof doesn't make sense. I mean, we've, we've really earned our stripes in the most challenging neighborhoods of the city of Cleveland where phasing and cost constraints are significant.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from anybody in the audience, briefly? Yes, Dennis?
Just to re-comment, one of the reasons--
Would you come to the microphone, please?
One of the reasons we're here today, and we appreciate the time you're willing to spend on this, is you've all read about the Lorraine Historic Streetcar Line. Without the casino, with the museum, this plan there and the waterfront development facilities, we are putting in for a request to build a three-mile streetcar loop, of which Broadway will be included from 21st Street on down to the waterfront. And studies have shown, economic development studies that show this can go a long way toward redeveloping not only Broadway, but with pedestrian-oriented and transit-oriented development, two blocks on each side of Broadway, which would include a lot of historic homes. And the people in the area will see an economic development from everything we've talked about, including the desire or maybe the need to fix up their own home, and it's programs like this that are going to make it possible. So we're encouraging everybody in the area, if we can get the streetcar line going, to take a look at the whole development area economically and see what we can do to really make the city of Lorraine grow again like it should into a caring and economically viable community, and I thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Former State Representative John Bender, welcome.
Thank you. I haven't seen the new commissioners. Congratulations on your election. I'm a member of the Lorraine County Historical Board, a member of the Avon Historical Society, and also on the Ohio Environmental Council State Board. And I had put Marilyn in touch with the Greater Ohio Network, and this is more of a point of information, namely, a former colleague of mine, Representative, former State Representative Gene Krebs, who was a county commissioner in southwestern Ohio, is now the executive director of Greater Ohio, and they're working with State Senator Kirk Schering out of Canton. And the bill, I guess, will go forward in the next couple of weeks, but namely, it would have to do with preservation, a tax credit, 25% tax credit for historically maintained or renovated buildings. So I wanted to give you a heads up on that because the network is working, and certainly I and many others in this room support this concept and hope that you can be supportive also. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Yes, Al?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm Albert Dwayne from Lorraine. I'm a member of many historical societies in the county. I too am in favor of this program that you folks have presented and think it is a worthwhile undertaking to preserve what we have in Lorraine County and also in Cuyahoga County. But I'm more partial to Lorraine County that we want to preserve what we have here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jack Smith from the Avon Historical Society, and I'd like to say that we support a heritage home loan program in any form that it can be accomplished in Lorraine County. However, in Avon, we have some special needs that could be considered. I don't know if it will be considered, but we have a number of century homes that are on commercially zoned property, and the Cuyahoga County program does not address those kinds of homes. So that in this program that could be established in Lorraine County, we would hope that century homes on commercially zoned property could be eligible for the Heritage Home Loan Program because they are actually the most endangered right now in Avon. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jane Blodgett, Chair of the City of Oberlin Historic Preservation Commission, and we have heard this presentation a number of times. Think this is a wonderful organization and support the loan program. We had, we have a historic preservation ordinance in Oberlin so that any one of our landmark homes owners has to come to us if they make a change. We had someone come in just recently who had called upon the Resource Center, and he was so impressed, they came out twice to look at porch roofs and recommended a copper roof to them, and they're going to go ahead with this and with our full support, too. So I hope that you will consider this program. It would be very beneficial to the many older homes in Oberlin also.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else? Yes, Terry.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Terry Whacker, and I'll just, I'll just say that I'm from O'Leary and from Lorraine County. Look out the window, spring is just around the corner, believe it or not. One of the things that we like to do, I like to do, is just take a drive in the summertime. And where do we go? We go to Oberlin. Why do we go to Oberlin? We go to Wellington, we drive down the Lake Road. We have our own neighborhoods here in O'Leary. We have Eastern Heights area, and think about why we go down Washington Avenue, for instance. You know, we say, oh, look at these beautiful older homes. And on the same street, we might say, oh, look at all these old houses. But then, right next to it, isn't this a beautiful older home? And why do we say that? Because it's maintained the character with which it was designed. And if we, if we take these older homes, which could be an asset to Lorraine County, my neighborhood is made up almost entirely of homes that are 75, 150 years old. If we take those homes and we take, if we just improve it with an off-the-shelf porch, it becomes an old house. But if we take that home and we put a porch on it that's, that's, fits into the nature of the house which it was intended and which it was designed, it becomes an old home, and then we don't lose our tax base in Lorraine County, but we create new people who want to get involved in the community. So I think that it's an investment in the future, and in the long run, we'll all, we'll all improve the neighborhood rather than just make it better but lose money in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, one and all, for your comments, and when Marilyn came to see me, she asked for an audience so that we could all hear the same thing. So this was the assigned assignment this morning. We appreciate your coming to offer your comments for this. I know that we've talked to our community development director, and I think he has some ideas on how we might or might not do something like this in Lorraine County. So I think that the board will take this under advisement and see what we might be able to work out.
Excuse me, Commissioner. How about our county treasurer, Dan Tellerick? Anything to say, Dan?
I didn't ask him to speak on purpose. He did. Good.
I imagine you need a devil's advocate everywhere. There's a tremendous amount of intangible, intangibility or whatever that's going on in this program, and it's very good. It's very good for a county or a city that's having an exodus of its population, possibly maybe the city of O'Leary or city of Lorraine. But the county on its hold in Lorraine County, the last census went up 5%. Currently, I think there's a BIA meeting this evening that's going to show we are either the largest or one of the largest counties on the lake in population growth. 6,951 homes were built in the last four years. So we are growing. This is a good program to keep people in your county. Now, as much as this is a good, I've got to jump to the other side. I am the chief investment officer for Lorraine County. Our investment portfolio over the last two years, due to the fact that we're paying off the Justice Center, which is a good thing, has gone from $171 million to $146 million. And for every $1 million that you're going to take out of our investment portfolio to place into this, we're going to lose $30,000. Now, if you take the average county tax rate, that comes, and every dime of that million dollars goes into the auditor's tax duplicate, we would generate $23,821.13. Now, that doesn't sound too bad, but the county general fund out of that would only generate $490. $30,000, $490. Obviously, since I'm here to try to protect the investment earnings of the county, I just don't see that as being very applicable.
Thank you, Dan. And I know that we've had this discussion before, and I know that you were not a strong supporter of this because of those dynamics, and I appreciate your coming this morning. And that's specifically why I mentioned Ron Twining from Community Development, because I think there might be some alternate ways we might be able to do something. Did you want to comment, Ron, or not? Okay, fine. He's still working on it, so, okay? Once again, thank you for your attendance, appreciate it, and the information that you provided for us, unless commissioners want to say something else?
That's it.
Thanks, Ted. We will revert back to item number 14 at this time. Did you want to say something, Marilyn?
I was just going to let you know that we're delighted to work with you, looking forward to talk to you some more about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
Thank you, Commissioner. What you have before you with item 14 is what's called an expedited annexation petition. That is one of the new forms of annexation. It does not call for a public hearing as such. Like any resolution, you are able to take public comment if you want it, but we do not have a formal public hearing. Basically, under the law, there are a number of things that have to be submitted to you on this petition. It requires a petition signed by all the owners in the territory, the submission of an accurate map with an accurate legal description, the naming of an agent for the petitioners, and the attachment of an annexation agreement. And I believe all those items have been submitted with the clerk. After a review of the map to the engineer, the engineer brought, office has brought one matter to our attention, and I'm going to distribute a little map. As a result of this annexation, the area that you indicate, you see indicated in orange there, which is just really street, a roadway, is kind of isolated and remaining in the And the green area that you see there marked indicates an area where just half of the road is, is being annexed. The engineer notes that that's contrary to the commissioner's past policies where they like to keep roads unified. Unfortunately, we have a situation where the annexation agreement that was signed here, was signed in 1991, and then the new annexation law came into effect with 2001, and there's a little bit of a gap there, which is allowing this odd situation to be created. The annexation agreement does provide in it that that orange area will be maintained and serviced for emergency services by the city of Oberlin, so I think we have that covered. There also is some language regarding that green area that is not as clear as I would like it to be, and hopefully some discussions between the Oberlin Fire District and the Wellington Fire District can, can resolve some of those issues. The long and the short of it, the concerns by the engineer are, are concerns, and Mr. McConnell from the township has shared in those concerns. Nevertheless, the way the law is written, the petition, and I know the petitioners have attempted to address those things before bringing the petition to us, and they have tried to remedy those as much as they, they could. But be that as it may, the law indicates that as long as those factors that I have listed for you are met, it is mandatory upon the commissioners to go forth with the annexation.
You referred to an agreement for the benefit of the new commissioners. Would you like to expand upon the agreement that you referred to?
The annexation agreement?
Yes.
Under the law, under this type of, what allows it to become an expedited annexation agreement is, again, if all the owners agree to it, and there is a specific annexation agreement, being an agreement with the township, indicating that they, they had consented to this, and that annexation agreement was entered into in 1991. And it does, it does indicate in there that the city of Oberlin will be maintaining this area and the orange area and will provide fire services for that area. So that does seem to be covered. It's just that we end up with this odd thing where that little area is going to remain, technically, even though it's just roadway, it still remains in the township, and it's surrounded by city property. So it's just an odd thing that is there that we would like to get rid of, and I think some people are going to go back and approach the landowner again and see if he might not fix that up so that that will not continue to exist.
Okay, but for today's purposes?
But for today's purposes, that is not an issue that we are permitted to consider, and it is not an issue that enables you to deny an annexation.
Okay, and then at this point in time, Mark, did you get your issues heard?
I think the issues that--
Would you come to the microphone, please? Sorry.
I think the issues that the township have, we will probably be able to discuss with the city and, and their safety service representatives and our safety service representatives and work out. It doesn't seem to be from my, or the explanation I got, that we can deal with it in conjunction with the annexation application, and so I think, you know, we will be able to, and I'm sure be able to, deal with what, who's going to service the, the intersection there in, in the case of an accident and a request for fire protection or, or fire services. Right now, it's, it's Wellington Fire District's obligation, and with this annexation going forward, it's going to be about a 50-50 mix, which could create some problems, but hopefully the two entities can get together and come up with a service agreement, and, and then we can have a stable, stable application of safety forces in the area there. So it's going to have to be done in, in discussions.
Thank you, Mark. Jerry, is there?
We just need a, I don't know if the petitioners had anything else they wanted to say.
Do you wish to speak, sir? Would you come to the microphone, please?
Good morning. My name is Eric Brunig. I am working with attorney Jim Taylor on this, who's actually the agent. Mr. Taylor had to leave. He apologizes. He had other commitments this morning. Basically, what Mr. Ennis and Mr. McConnell have said so far is completely correct. We have made efforts as far as we could to remedy the situation so these issues wouldn't come up. Most of those attempts failed. We couldn't get as much agreement as we wanted to from certain property owners. Other than that, though, I believe the annexation agreement between the township and the city does cover most of those issues, perhaps not as thoroughly as we'd like, but there should be additional discussion between the two, and it shouldn't be a problem further later on when this comes up. Other than that, I believe all the technical requirements have been met, and as Mr. Ennis explained, I think the annexation should go forward. We have talked with Mr. McConnell. We agree with his concerns, we understand them, and I think they should not be a problem in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Brunig.
Thank you.
Anyone else? The chair will entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Sure. Teresa, that's okay. Helping you save your voice.
You don't feel good.
Thank you. Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Thank you. The board did not-- The Board did not conclude their executive session, so I believe at this time we will return to that.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at nine-thirty at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Aleria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
In seventeen eighty-seven, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In eighteen oh three, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present eighty-eight, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until eighteen ten, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in eighteen twenty-two, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial, and although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships. In eighteen oh seven, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in eighteen oh seven, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which twenty years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in eighteen seventy-four. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In eighteen ninety-four, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In eighteen thirteen, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area, and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by eighteen eighty known as Fields Corners, and was the site of the town's waterwell. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In eighteen ten, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Astubula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in eighteen thirteen, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in eighteen twenty-three, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in eighteen eleven to the Beaver Creek. By eighteen fifteen, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskeyville, today the intersection of Roots Fifty-Eight and One Thirteen, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By eighteen thirty-six, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in eighteen seventy-three, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In nineteen oh nine, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In nineteen seventeen, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In eighteen fourteen, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in nineteen eleven, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in nineteen seventeen. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in eighteen fifteen and sixteen. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until eighteen twenty-four, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the eighteen twenty-two reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County, and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake, and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In eighteen sixteen, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range Nineteen. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July fourth, eighteen seventeen. The Village of Brownhelm Mills, located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow, was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rossin in eighteen sixteen. Ten years later, the Rossins were forced to build a grist mill, or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village the locals called Rossenville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In eighteen seventy-seven, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossenville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Aleria Township, Carlisle was settled in eighteen sixteen by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in eighteen twenty-two, Carlisle Township became its own entity. La Porte developed as the township village, with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In eighteen forty, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over ten thousand acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Aleria, and the city, which also bears his family name. In eighteen seventeen, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed, and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the twentieth century. In eighteen twenty-two, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Aleria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base, as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero French General Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of eighteen seventeen, moved from New York State to the one hundred sixty acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton, and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in eighteen twenty-seven. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in eighteen eighteen, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling, or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from eighteen seventy to nineteen hundred. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, The Spirit of Seventy-Six. In eighteen eighteen, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by eighteen twenty-two, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers, as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In eighteen twenty-four, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township, that had been first settled in eighteen eighteen, requested detachment from Black River Township in eighteen twenty-five. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in eighteen thirty-three, and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only coed, but also multiracial, and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in nineteen ninety-two, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In eighteen twenty, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of eighteen eighteen. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of eighteen twenty-five. The first religious service was held in eighteen twenty-six, and the first school was in session in the summer of eighteen twenty-nine. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of eighteen twenty, Abner Loveland Junior became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Senior had arrived, and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of eighteen twenty-three, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in eighteen thirteen, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of eighteen twelve. By eighteen twenty, the land was surveyed, and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of eighteen twenty-one. By eighteen thirty-one, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporated township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. Le Grange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of eighteen twenty-five, established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of eighteen twenty-six, fourteen more settlers had arrived. The name Le Grange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In eighteen twenty-seven, the area was separated from Carlisle Township, and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of Le Grange. By eighteen seventy-five, the center had grown into a village, also incorporated as Le Grange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcock's, who built the first frame house in eighteen thirty-three. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In eighteen thirty-five, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners, and the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. When the first post office was established in eighteen thirty-five, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In eighteen fifty-two, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed, as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in eighteen ninety-one. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized, or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of eighteen thirty-two to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by eighteen thirty-five, the Commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By eighteen eighty, close to seven hundred citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester Center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.
This is our tenth barn. Nope, nope, sorry. This is our eleventh barn.
It got kind of boring watching the grass grow, so we thought we'd watch the paint dry.
grow.
Well, the Ohio Bicentennial Commission was born in 1995 by order of the Ohio General Assembly. They charged the commission with the duty of celebrating 200 years of Ohio history, culture, science. And the commission then began the task of planning a bicentennial celebration. The goal was always to include every Ohio county in the celebration. And to do that, we really, it was a grassroots up instead of a top-down, it was more of a bottom-up approach to the bicentennial, starting with the communities. We couldn't tell Clark County what to do from Columbus, but Clark County could tell us what they had in mind for the bicentennial. So that was really the tack that we took when we sat down and said, "How are we going to plan the bicentennial?" The beginnings in each Ohio county was forming groups in each county. And that's where our regional people came in and they helped kind of light the fire in each county for the bicentennial. And that was kind of hard back then. There was not a lot of kindling to light a fire for the bicentennial, as you can imagine in 1997 and 1998. So we said, "How can we get the word out? How can we spread the message of all things bicentennial?" One of the original regional coordinators, her name is Nicole Moretti. Nicole is a wonderfully creative person from Meggs County, down in the Appalachian section of Ohio. They were at a meeting and Nicole, out of the blue, said-
Barns, barns make a lot of sense in my district. Can't you see this logo all over barns in rural counties all over Ohio?
And about the next thought everybody had in their mind was, "Great, how do we paint a barn?"
The general consensus of the office was, if we could figure out how to do it, we would try it. But I called paint stores and I called all these places and nobody seemed to know how to do that anymore.
So Nicole was, took it upon herself to see if it could go. And she was in, I forget what town it was.
Barnesville. And was in the Chamber of Commerce in Barnesville and somebody had to take a phone call. And like any good former journalist, I read the stuff on the desk while I waited and one of them was a Barnesville Enterprise and on the front cover of the Barnesville Enterprise was a beautiful barn scotched and painted.
In the photo was a picture of a barn and on the barn was a logo of the Ohio State University painted by, at that time, 19-year-old kid.
And I didn't know, but my grandfather snapped a picture of it and-